Call meeting to order. It is now 5:06 PM and we will call this meeting to order on January 4th, 2023. Oh, sorry about that. I'm reading off my script. I apologize. January 11th, 2023. Thank you very much, Director Tate. I appreciate that. Director Byas, can you take attendance, please?
Stephanie Mom.
Here.
Becky Byasal here. Mark Zuzik.
Here.
Lisa Hadine.
Here.
Jessica Dressley.
Here.
Carrie Tate.
Here.
Ryan Davis.
Here. Please stand and remove your hats for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next piece of business is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion for approval, please? Do I have a second?
Second, Zuzik.
Thank you. All those in favor of tonight-
Can we have discussion?
Yes, we can. Sorry.
Thank you.
Yes. Director Dean.
Thank you. I'd like to amend the agenda to remove requests for future topics. It's, I don't believe it's relevant to the organizational meeting. And then I have a second motion, second proposed amendment. After we take action on that one.
One moment.
Couldn't we, sorry, can we get some additional information? Why, why is it not relevant?
We're not quite there yet. Okay. So, the, do we have a second?
I did.
Okay. All right, discussion.
Yeah, the purpose of the org meeting is pretty straightforward. It's to, to do the logistical work of the board. And our process of, that, we've been poor at following at best, of notifying the chair and asking for items to be added and, and get those items scheduled is, is not possible since we don't know who the chair would be and it's just not work for this meeting. It would be work for a future meeting.
Further comment? All right, seeing no further comment, then we'll go straight to a vote on the proposal for the amendment, excuse me, the amendment modification. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, aye. Those opposed? All right. That is struck. Director Adine, you had another one.
Thank you. Yes, it is a related item. I'd like to amend the agenda to add a topic, to suspend the request for future topics item for four months. Going forward and I'll speak about why, when, if and when I get a second.
Do I have a second for the motion?
Zuzik's second, just for the sake of conversation.
All right, discussion, please.
Thank you. We have an identified process in our board handbook and in our policies for building agendas and getting topics scheduled as well as, and I've spoken to this topic before, which I would like us to be more disciplined about raising topics, working them from work sessions, directing them to committees if necessary, receiving feedback, implementing them at a board meeting. And I feel like what we found is that our request for future topics has not allowed that to be well implemented. I also anticipate that given the higher level of experience that we all have on the board now, that we'd be in a place going forward that we could, could more robustly implement our, our previous practice and the one that's aligned in our policies and our board handbook. I hold that out in a position of optimism, which is why I would say suspend it for four months. See if we make good on that practice and then we can make a decision about it in the long term.
Further comment? Director Tate?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you can spell out what exactly is the process because I believe the reason that we moved to this process was because of, I'm going to say my, some of it was my own frustration. I would request items to be added to an agenda in an email and was basically told no or yeah, we'll do it at some point and then it wouldn't happen. And that, that request never made it to the full board. So the full board was never aware of my requests. It was only specific individuals. And I think it's only fair that since we are supposed to work as a team, we should be presenting our ideas for conversation to the entire team. So anyway, back to my original question. Do you know where the, where it is in the handbook? Or what the process is that's supposed to be specifically according to our handbook?
My understanding of Robert's rules is that questions and responses are to be directed to the chair. That being said, no, I don't have the page number in front of me. I suspect it's in the policy that's about building the agenda.
Director Mom.
It, it is in the policy that outlines how we build the agenda. However, it is, it is relatively vague. So is it, can I make a comment on, did you have anything more? Okay. So I, one of my biggest frustrations over the last, I would say probably three months, and I've, I've verbalized this with a few individuals, is that things keep getting put onto the agenda or, you know, topics for, for work and we're not getting things done. So I about two, three months ago, I had asked, is there any way that we can just take like a tactical pause, get caught up? And then move forward with adding additional items. Four months, I think, is okay, but I would also like to, you know, caveat that should, you know, a month or two down the road, if, if by February we find out that we are at a place where we can start adding additional items, that we would bring it back to the agenda. So I don't want that to be, so like essentially amending the amendment if it passes tonight. I also don't want it to be something where nobody for four months can even propose anything. So, but to, to your point, 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 Director Hadine is that it really should be, you know, if I have a topic, it should go to the chair, the chair vets it. Okay, what are some, you know, some follow-up questions? To, to ensure that we're getting to the actual question. What is the actually that we are looking for? Is this management, is, and I fully admit, my first year, probably year and a half, I would ask, hey, can we get this on the agenda? And then the chair at the time would explain, you know, ask a bunch of questions. Why? What does that look like? And then come to find out it was a management question and this is who I need to actually talk to to get my question answered. So a lot of that stuff, because I would always ask for things to get put on the agenda and I'd say maybe one or two actually got on the agenda because of that vetting process. Anyway, I don't want this to stop us from building things and, and bringing up really good concerns and, and getting work done, but I, it would be really nice to just take a quick, it's not even a pause, but just to get caught up and really assess where we're at and what we need to look, look towards in the future.
The only comment I'll add is that four months seems a little long. Maybe we pause for a shorter period of time on it, say like one cycle or something like that. That's the only thing that I might suggest in terms of amending the proposal, but that's, that's all I've got to add. Director Adine, you had something else?
I just have a procedural point. At this point, we're discussing adding an item to the agenda as it's currently framed and adoption of said item can change should it become an agenda item.
Very fair. Thank you. Any further comment on the proposed addition? All right, seeing nothing else on that, then we will vote on the addition of the item and then, then we'd be able to follow up on that subsequently in this meeting. So all those in favor of the proposed addition to the agenda, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, we'll add that to the agenda. Director Tate?
I move to amend the agenda by adding a brief discussion regarding officer responsibilities prior to voting for the officer positions. And I'm, I'm doing this because I would, I have spoken to a board member in another district and they had mentioned that they have an executive committee and I think that this would be an interesting structure for us to consider. So it's ultimately going to be two motions. One motion to just talk about responsibilities and another motion to act, to discuss the possibility of adding this executive committee. So motion one, I move to amend the agenda by adding a brief discussion regarding officer responsibilities.
Is there a second to the motion?
Seconded.
With a second, we will now have a discussion. Director Tate, you have laid out some description of what you're talking about. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
This, I believe that this mostly has to do with the responsibilities of the vice chair. And I know in the past year or not year, probably nine months or so, our vice chair hasn't specifically been only a fill-in for the chair when absent. And I think that this potential structure is more like the structure we've had over the past year. So I'm just proposing we discuss doing more of what, what has happened, what I assume has worked well. So that's it.
Director Hadine.
I would like to point out that policy 202 does identify the responsibilities of school board officers. And should we make any modifications at this meeting, it would require us going back through policy modifications. So I think there may be a different way to approach this. And I, so I would suggest I think it would be, we could, we could spend time reading 202 together, but I don't see what else it would add for purposes of discussion to speak to the school board. Officer responsibilities are already identified.
Director Dressley.
So according to policy 202, the vice chair shall perform the duties of chair in the event the chair is temporarily absent. And that's the only thing it says about vice chair. So if, if, I mean, we've all been, know that that's not been experienced this past year, which is fine. It just needs to be restated. So maybe a policy amendment? I don't, that's just my-
Director Mom.
Did you just call me director mom? That's what it shows up on the teleprompter sometimes.
You mean like M O M?
Yeah.
No.
Not kidding.
I said mom.
I'm not kidding. Somebody pointed it out to me. Anyway, no, I do think that we need to have a discussion about what the officer duties are, but I do think, going back to your point, Director Dressley too, is that it, it falls under policy and Director Hadine mentioned it under 202. And maybe, you know, because it is incredibly vague and it's, you know, subjective to, I would assume, you know, like with, with my role, it was at the request of the chair to be involved in certain things. So you know, we could, I, I'm, I'm open to having a discussion. I just think it needs to be with that policy in front of us, probably at a work session, honestly.
Director Tate.
My only, my only reason for bringing it up tonight is that it may change who wants to be the vice chair and how people vote for that position, knowing that the responsibilities may be different.
Oh, sorry. Any other comment? Now being, seeing any other comments to be made, then we will vote on adding this to the agenda. All those in favor of making this an addition, add, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. We'll add that to the agenda. Director Tate.
My second motion, I move to amend the agenda to add a discussion about potentially adding an executive committee during the committee discussion.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
With that, we'll have discussion. First, Director Tate, anything additional to add?
Yes, I just discussed this with a board member and they, they stated that basically their, their chair and their vice chair work very closely with their superintendent, much like has happened over the past several months with us. But it just is, is a formalized committee more so than what we have been experiencing. So it's, it's just a way to formalize that, that structure and that, those responsibilities and, and all that kind of thing.
Director Adine.
Thank you, Chair Davis. I'm quickly scrolling through our agenda as it currently stands. We do have an item around board committee membership. And I feel like adding a second agenda item specific to a particular committee is not necessary. I think it fits within that conversation. I would anticipate advancing a conversation that I've raised a couple of times around the use of a finance committee. I think it's already covered in our existing agenda. And it's not necessary to add it.
Sorry, my request was to add that discussion to the committee discussion.
And I don't think that it, I think it's not, I'm not saying it's not relevant. I think it already exists. Like we can have committee discussion. And I'm sorry, yet again, Robert's rules would, would ask that I speak to the chair and not in response to another director's comment. Excuse me.
So currently on the agenda, friends for discussions, board committee membership for the 2023 calendar year. I believe that what Director Adine is suggesting is that it can be incorporated to as part of that conversation. Without having to add an item, I, I, so it can be part of that conversation. So in other words, not necessarily add to the agenda because technically it's already there because it can be part of that conversation. Yeah, that's fine. Director Tate.
Last one. I move to amend the agenda to separate the RUP law firm from the other two law firms versus voting on all three of them as one vote.
A point of order, we have to take that off, last, last motion off the table that was seconded before we-
Yeah, I didn't, I thought you were going to make another comment. Sorry, Director Tate. So the first thing we need to do is get that one off the table. So we just need to, you can either rescind your-
I rescind my previous motion.
Now, Director Tate.
Now I'll start again. I move to amend the agenda to separate the RUP law firm from the other two firms versus voting on all three firms at once for one vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, now we can have discussion. Director Tate?
Yeah, I just, I don't want to vote on all three of them as one vote because I'm going to vote differently.
Any further discussion? All right, the vote on the table separation, except we read from the, from the other vote for the other two firms. And so it stands individually. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion does not pass? All right. Do we have anything else? For the agenda? All right. Sorry, I had to scroll down to look at something else. All right, seeing none, we will move on to approval of the minutes from the December 7th, 2022 regular board meeting.
I'd make a motion to approve. Zuzik.
Second, Hadine.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? Oh, that's right. Got so caught up in them. I apologize. I apologize. Yes, and we already have the additions that we've made. So at this point, I need to see if we're good on the agenda with amendments that we've made. So all those in favor of the agenda for this evening, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Agenda is approved. Sorry about that. Now I need a motion for approval of the minutes for December 7, 22, 22 regular board meeting. Director Zuzik, do I have a second?
Second, Hadeen.
Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Minutes are approved. So the first order of business is the election of the officers for the board. Oh, we did add discussion, that's right above it. I'm sorry, it hasn't been updated yet, I apologize. I'm going off of this and hasn't been updated yet. So we have to have our discussion first, I apologize. So let's move into that right now. All right. Let's start with, what do we have for us in there? So let's discuss the officerships, and we'll start with the chair, and we'll just go down through all four, starting with the chair of the board. Now, the chair of the board, the largest, the chair of the board's description is in the policy handbook as well in 202. Do we need to read through it in specific? Is that what we should do? Because we can most assuredly do that. I can bring up the handbook, I can also bring up 202, and we can go through that as well. Yep, I've got the handbook up now. Sort of bring up 202 as well. I'll also do that. Okay, so per the handbook, the roles of the chair, presides at all school board meetings, countersigns all orders upon the treasurer for claims allowed by the school board, represents the school district in all actions and performs all duties chair usually performs. There is a, that is item one, and within the actual Policy 202, it did says, in case of absence, inability, refusal of the clerk to draw orders for the payment of money authorized by a vote of the majority of the school board to be paid, the chair may draw the orders or the office of the clerk may be declared vacant by the chair and treasurer and filled by appointment. Those are the two items that are under officers' responsibilities for chair. I've identified the handbook as well as Policy 202 and what it says specifically. Director Tate.
So for clarity though, there's a lot more to the chair responsibilities, right, that aren't listed in here, such as meeting with the superintendent on a weekly basis, developing agendas for, for, for the, all the meetings, communicating on behalf of the board. I guess, what, is there anything that I'm missing? And obviously communicating out to the board in one-way communications.
That is correct. The, the trick here is that because it's within policy, we'd have to work through policy change that first of all, to be more detailed. Secondly, I would take caution with any of these descriptions as to creating an exhaustive list or what appears to be exhaustive list. Because if something were to come up that's not on the list, then I think there's, there's got to be some latitude. I guess the word I'm looking for in terms of how we list things, I'm not saying we can't put more things in there through policy, but I'm also saying that we want to be careful not to say, this is exactly what it is, because, you know, there, there could always be another component to or something along those lines. Now correcting me if I'm wrong, but in order to do that, we'd have to substitute, on some subsequent evening, change out how it's written, change out how it's done through policy. Like, it's like, in other words, I don't know if we can get that done this evening. We can talk about what that would actually look like, and then people would be voting based upon what that will ultimately look like once policy gets it put through. But I'm specifically talking about this evening and getting our org business done. Director Dresley.
So I'm wondering if we can just have a description for, I mean, I, I don't think it needs to be in policy written out exactly everything that needs to be said, but just for our own knowledge, what the actual positions and responsibilities are on the day-to-day for the person who serves as board chair, board, vice chair, clerk, and treasurer.
Got it. That's, thank you, Director Dresley. Director Mom?
Can I propose then that after tonight's meeting, whoever may be in those positions, it, it would be nice if we would all sit down, be it at a work session or if it's in an email, and say, I am going, I'm committed to doing X, Y, and Z as chair. Vice chair is committed to doing X, Y, and Z. Clerk will do this, it's delegated. These are the items that are delegated to the executive assistant, treasurer, if there's any delegations with that too. You know, this is how the checks are signed. A more defined list, I don't think that needs to be tonight, because this really does feed into policy too. I'm also very hesitant to have that discussion tonight without having taken a look at all the policies and outlining, because I know the, the board chair and then board members are outlined specifically throughout the 200 series policy. So I would want to outline and make a list of what those are, and I, personally, I don't have time for that tonight.
Director Madell.
I just want to remind everybody that I think, I think everybody at this table's gone through phase three or phase four training, which MSBA talks about what are the potential duties of each one of the officer positions on a school board. So that would also be a place to reference if there are questions.
So in terms of just descriptors for everyone, yes, beyond this, there is, there's regular meetings with the superintendent. In my particular case, it was weekly, does not have to be weekly, it could be bi-weekly, it depends on what's determined in terms of how often that communication is deemed necessary by whoever the chair happens to be in conjunction with the superintendent. In addition to that, there is, yes, the, the chair is also the voice that is the respondee or offender to communications to the public, so that there's one person and not multiple people responding. Those are things that are not pointed out here that are part of it. So you are correcting that, Director Tate, in terms of those additional responsibilities that are not showing up right here in front of us. Oh, also, typically the chair is one that would be giving the heads-up of something that is going to, just such, for example, school being out. Hey, just so you know, we're looking at what's happening right now with the weather, you know, that type of thing. Typically, the chair will know a couple of minutes before the rest of the board, but that's more of a communication piece in conjunction with the superintendent. Director Hadeen.
The chair is also responsible for a no more than two-minute speech at the graduation. I don't know what happens to a chair that goes past minutes.
That's true.
But I was very clearly identified when I was chair that it should be no longer than two minutes.
Yes, that's true. They are responsible for a speech at commencement. That is correct. So one of the things we can do also that might help expedite this process is if we talk through it, especially for the person that recently filled the role, and then, it depends on how we want to look at it, we can discuss all four and then vote, or we can discuss, vote, discuss, vote, discuss, vote. Maybe it's easier to just discuss all four and then vote straight through. So that being said, the next thing we will be discussing is the vice chair role. Now, the vice chair role, as described in here, is similar to what was described earlier. The vice chair shall perform the duties of the chair in the event of the chair's temporary absence. That's slightly oversimplified, but again, this comes down to what the chair wants in terms of how they want to work with that executive group. It's interesting you call it executive group, Director Tate, because in a sense, I guess it is. So in my particular case, for transparency, I determined that I wanted to ensure that if something were to happen to me, God forbid, that the vice chair was in the know of what was currently going on and not having to try to play catch-up. Because if the vice chair weren't engaged at all in knowing what was going on, then if something were to happen to me, all the catch-up would have to be via the superintendent, because he's the only other individual who would know what the heck was going on. So that was my determination for doing that, is that I wanted someone else to know what was happening in the event that something should happen to me. Or if there's an instance where something is being worked through that involves me, the vice chair would have to do it, because I'd have to recuse myself from it. And that's another reason for them to be familiar with what's going on in the event that should happen, because I can't respond to my own situation. So that is also something to talk about in terms of the vice chair. But that is easily something that the chair can determine, you know, how they want to utilize it. But you are correct in the ways described, but the chair also has the latitude to determine if they want a little bit more support, assistance, that type of thing. So that's vice chair. That brings us to clerk or treasurer. We'll go with the treasurer first. The treasurer shall deposit the funds in the school district in the official depository. The treasurer shall have all reports which may be called for by the school board and perform all duties a treasurer usually performs. In event there are insufficient funds on hand to pay valid orders presented to the treasurer, the treasurer shall receive, endorse, and process the orders in accordance with Minnesota statute 123B dot 12. These duties are delegated to the director of finance here. And that's, and let's be honest, generally speaking, when you come onto a board, those, those are very specific skill sets, and so it makes sense to delegate to the director of finance. Now, if the director of finance were to want to consult with the treasurer on something, that is something Director Finance could certainly do. Or if the treasurer, you know, were to have a question of the director of finance, that is something they could certainly ask. But these duties are typically delegated to the director of finance because of the complexities and the skill sets involved in performing them. Director Tate.
So I just want to be clear, so the only thing then that the treasurer does if we vote to delegate that to the director of finance is to cover for if the chair and vice chair are, and clerks, clerk is all gone? Or is that incorrect?
They, they, there's a, that packing order, that order of reporting, yes, that is absolutely correct. And the, the treasurer also is the signatory on all of our financial documents, so payroll checks, for example, that's signature on every single one of them, or anything else that's in that thing. And they, that's a photostatic copy that the director of finance is authorized to utilize for such things. But you're correct, in terms of someone being unavailable, someone being unavailable, yes, you're correct in that. That brings us to clerk. Now, the clerk shall keep a record of all meetings in the books provided. Within three days after election, the clerk shall notify all persons elected of their elections. On or before September 15th each year, the clerk shall file with the school board a report of the revenues, expenditures, and balances in each fund for the preceding fiscal year, making transmit to the commissioner. Certified reports showing revenues and expenditures in detail, and such as our financial information required by law, rule, or as may be called for by the commissioner. Length of school term and enrollment attendance by grades and other items of information is called for by the commissioner. The clerk shall enter into the clerk's record book copies of all reports and of the teacher's term reports and the proceedings of any meeting, and keep an item as account of all expenses of the school district. The clerk shall furnish to the county auditor on or before September 30th of each year an attested copy of the clerk's records showing the amount of proposed property tax voided by the school district or the school board for school purposes. The clerk shall draw and sign all orders upon the treasurer for the payment of money for bills allowed by the school board for salaries of officers and for teachers' wages and all claims to be countersigned by the chair. The clerk shall perform such duties as required by the Minnesota election law or other applicable laws relating to the conduct of elections. The clerk shall perform the duties of the chair in the event of the chairs and the vice chairs temporary absences. This, obviously, would be a full-time job. So most of this is delegated also to the, to the district, much of it being done by the assistant to the superintendent. Director Baisel. I am sorry, Director Dresley, I'm all over the place. I was thinking about the clerk being Director Baisel, sorry.
So for the clerk, that the board clerk, would I be correct in saying that the resolution reading, resolution signing, I mean, those are things that the, the board member as a clerk does, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Absolutely.
Does the board clerk take minutes of the meeting?
That's delegated to executive, executive assistant, and then a lot of things I were in communication with a lot, emails or text messages, and I come in and I sign documents as well.
Thank you, that's helpful there.
Yeah, and that's when I was, so I was clerk for two years, and that's exactly what I did too. So I would take a look at the, the minutes and like, Becky would sometimes call and say, hey, who did you get for this second because the audio cut out? And I'd say, reference my notes, oh, it was so-and-so. So just double-checking the records.
That's what I've got for the four descriptions, and is there anything else? I did, I just realized, Director Mom, I kind of went through vice chair, is there anything I might have missed? Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I realize I spoke to that directly. All right. Director Hadeen, in terms of treasurer, anything that I might have missed?
Just to, it's been the practice that, that the treasurer fills in in the event that a chair, the vice chair is gone, and the clerk fills up to that position, then the treasurer fills into the clerk's position, and will read resolutions at the table and things like that, just so that, that there's fewer moving parts for any one individual. And then also, and this is just within our board practices, maintaining or managing the sunshine fund is usually done by the treasurer. And commonly, the treasurer would chair the finance committee in the event that we had a finance committee.
Thank you, appreciate that. If there is nothing else, we'll move on to our next agenda item. Thank you very much for the participation in that, I appreciate it. Moving back over to our agenda now. So we're back to our next order of business, which shall be the election of officers for the board. Nominations need not be seconded, and upon hearing no further nominations, there will be a vote on each nominee in the order in which he or she was nominated. The nominee with the most votes will be appointed. We'll start with the election of the chairperson of the board. I am ready to take any nomination for the chairperson of the board. I would like to actually kick it off by nominating Director Hadeen to be the next chairman of the board. So that is my nomination. Are there any additional nominees? Director Dresley?
I nominate Carrie Tate for director of, for the chair. I believe that her attention to detail and her commitment to our students would make her a great fit for this position.
Are there any additional nominations for chairperson of the board? I'll ask again, are there any other nominations for chairperson of the board? With no further nominations, we will close the nominations for the office of chairperson and move to a vote. Those whom vote in favor of Lisa Hadeen, please raise your hand. Those who vote in favor of Carrie Tate, please raise your hand. Having received the majority vote, the school board chairperson, vice seat 200 for 2023 will be Lisa Hadeen. At this time, Chair Hadeen, I will be switching seats with you. I'm going to trade seats with you. I am going to leave the script here and the gavel for you. I congratulate you, and I'm going to move over to your seat and sit next to Director Zouz, if he's okay with that. All right.
All right, thank you. All right, our next item for action is election of a vice chair. Our next item for action is election of a vice chair of the board. Are there any nominations for vice chair of the board? Director Dressley? Director Biesel?
I nominate Stephanie Malm.
Are there any further additional nominations for vice chair of the board? Are there any additional nominations for vice chair of the board? With no further nominations, we will now close the nominations for the office of vice chairperson and move to a vote. Those in favor of Carrie Tate, please raise your hand. Thank you. Those in favor of Stephanie Malm, please raise your hand. Thank you. Having received a majority vote, the school board vice chairperson of ISD 200 for 2023 will be Stephanie Malm. Our next item for action is election of the board clerk. Are there any nominations for clerk of the board? Director Malm?
I would like to nominate Becky Biesel for clerk of the board.
Thank you. Are there any additional nominations? Director Tate?
I nominate Jessica Dressley for clerk of the board.
Are there any additional nominations for clerk of the board? Are there any additional nominations for clerk of the board? With no further nominations, we will close the nominations for the office of clerk and move to a vote. Those who are in favor of Becky Biesel, please raise your hand. Those who are in favor of Jessica Dressley, please raise your hand. Having received the majority vote, the school board clerk of ISD 200 for 2023 will be Becky Our next action for item, item for action is election of board treasurer. Are there any nominations for treasurer of the board? Director Malm?
I would like to nominate Brian Davis for treasurer of the board.
Are there any additional nominations for treasurer of the board? Are there any additional nominations for treasurer of the board? With no further nominations, we will close the nominations for the office of treasurer and move to a vote. I believe we can do this by acclamation, given that there's a single nominee. We're still going to vote, just to be comfortable. All of those who vote in favor of Brian Davis, please raise your hand. We have no second nominee. Having received the majority vote, the school board treasurer for ISD 200 for 2023 will be Brian Davis. Okay. Thank you. There was a printed copy of the agenda that was the draft agenda. So that's the paperwork that I have in front of me is just to follow that in case anybody's I'd like to recognize any visitors that we may have with us on the online version. I appreciate you taking your time to attend, even if you're watching this at a later time. We really appreciate and acknowledge your engagement with the Hastings School District. I would like to remind the community that board meeting agendas, minutes can be found on Board Book, along with many, if not virtually all of the attachments that are shared at meetings. And those are available on the district website for both current and past meetings. Items for discussion, we're going to start first tonight with our board committee membership for the 2022-2023 calendar year. The expectation is following discussion that these would be moved to action items for tonight. Please do.
Just to kick it off, in the, in the notes, what I did is I, for board members, I put the items or the committees slash memberships, appointments. Some of them are not really committees, so I just wanted to talk through a couple of those. So for example, the membership on the Minnesota State High School League, I know Director Biesel's been, has done that, that essentially requires nothing except for being designated as the appointee from the board and potentially providing input to votes that the Minnesota State High School League does. However, that position also can delegate that to the athletic director or the superintendent, which is typically what the case is because a lot of the meetings are what the athletic director for the district goes to. I miss anything on that? Okay. So that, there's no requirement, it's just to do anything much more than that. The Metro EXU, most of you will remember that we belong to Metro EXU. Metro EXU operates in the same way. If there ever comes up a vote, a designated, a designated person of the board would be able to vote on something because we belong to Metro EXU. So there's no other requirement at this time except for to be designated as that person. And then the last one on there that I have is the relicenser committee. This is the teacher relicenser committee as part of statute. It's a requirement that a member of the community is a, belongs on that committee. Many districts that do not identify their board members as official employees have a board member assigned to that. The unique part of that is while you have a, have a person assigned to it, it's rare that a person shows up to it because that committee is discussing whether or not teachers have met certain buckets for their licensure requirements. And so there's not a whole, unless you're a teacher or an administrator, as a board member, there's not a whole lot of expertise to even engage in the conversation. But because it's a statutory requirement, it's on here, and I didn't want us to miss that. And the person who has been serving is no longer doing that. So those, just for heads up on those three. Not really much to do, just to be appointed to.
I'd like to speak briefly to 917. We had our organizational meeting last night. We've, 917 had maintained an old practice of organizational meetings in July, June and July, which is, there's historic reasons to that. They didn't adjust to January when many other boards did. They're making that adjustment this year. A board member on 917 is on a three-year term, and they're now aligning, and I anticipate that there will be action taken at this board in January or February to realign term dates to December end dates, just to kind of hook into their org meeting times. As it currently stands, my term, as I'm the 917 representative from ISD 200, ends in July of 2025. 917 board members are commonly school board members in the district that they represent, but not 100%. I think we have currently two, possibly three of the nine representatives to 917 are not board members. So that's, that's an issue to resolve in the future, but my term right now goes through
I would also recommend that the board consider, these aren't really appointments, but there might be an ability to vote because we're members of these organizations. Currently, the board, the district belongs to both AMSD and C. And most people aren't aware that the way that those, what happens typically is the board chair by default is usually for most districts, the person that shows up and if there was a vote to be taken, is taken. But because we continue to belong to both of them, this is probably the meeting to, as a board, decide what you want to do, if you want to do something there. There is no, again, it's another two items where there's no requirement to show up. Usually, I'm at AMSD almost every, every month. And I think if you remember, I put that out to the board quite a long time ago, and Director Malm was really the only one that had said, hey, yeah, let me know when those meetings are. And so I know you've attended a couple of them. But I would add those two as opportunities for board members, particularly because your focus is on legislative agenda and that those organizations give good insight to that.
Director Tate?
Yeah, as I, as I mentioned before, I'd like to add the possibility of having an executive committee on here. And then also, in October, we formed the school bed, school board evaluation committee. Wondering if we want to continue that or just create that ad hoc as needed.
We'll move, did you have anything further to add to Lieutenant McDowell? Thank you. We'll move to a group discussion about these. Our past practice with committee assignments has been that the chair receives people's interest and then puts that out shortly thereafter. I'm open to seeing how the conversation goes, to seeing if we can't resolve something at the table. Acknowledging that we don't, I don't want to give a substantive amount of back and forth on that tonight, so we'll kind of see how that goes. And it is a chair's responsibility to make the committee assignments. Does, does anybody have any thoughts about, about committee?
Yes. My main question is the frequency of these committees. So I know when we had facilities, that was primarily in the morning because that's, you know, all the facilities folks would meet, and that's when they were working. So I know with policy, it's pretty, pretty flexible. Usually because of my crazy schedule, it's later in the afternoon or into the evening. It was the same with community engagement, probably has to be in the evening because everybody works, everybody on that committee works in the, during the day for the most part. You know, the, so the frequency, the time, the place, just the basic logistics too. If there's something out there that kind of outlines all of that, I, I have a relatively good, I, I'm in my, I'm going in my fourth year here, I have a relatively good idea of when these committees meet. Speaking of AMSD, I, yeah, if you have the opportunity to, I, I would always call in. Really good information, especially during legislative sessions. They would, they would talk about, you know, what's going on. They would have a lot of really good keynote speakers. So that is, I, I don't know about C, but I would imagine it's probably close to the same.
I would expect everybody received, because I can't believe I received it as treasurer, an email from C and they're going to do a lunch with Brad? I don't remember the gentleman's name. And they're going to do Friday afternoon, it'll be a legislative update. MSBA does a legislative update every other Friday morning during the legislative session, which I would, I know everybody's getting those emails, I would encourage you to do that. I'm looking at, we can do a quick rundown. I'm going to summarize what I understand each policy committee to, or each committee to involve, and if somebody has some greater insights, please share that with me. Finance, I think we met three or four times this last year. We met in the mornings, we're meeting with Superintendent McDowell and usually Director of Finance. I would propose that we don't carry that committee forward into the next year. I don't know that it was a valuable use of board member time. And essentially what we got for this last year, I think it's, it's sort of a trail from when we were doing big, the end of levy work. But it's, it's an opportunity, it has been used in the past as an opportunity for the business office to give kind of a preview and get some board members up to speed on, on an upcoming budget item or a revision or, what kind of, those are the big cycle items. And maybe at the time when we had board members more involved with self-funded health insurance and dental insurance, you get updates with that regard. Challenges between scheduling and timing and cause them to be just days, frequently days prior to the board being briefed on the exact same topics. So I don't, I don't know that that was valuable. And then looking in, or as valuable as it's been in the past, looking into the next year, this next year is going to be about the levy. It's going to be about the levy. We have a levy renewal anticipated in November of 2023, and that to me feels like work of the whole. I see, one second, Director Dressley. That feels to me like work of the whole and work that should be done at the board table. If there's identified levy committee work, I think a committee could be put together at that time. So I would, I would propose that we don't staff a finance committee this year. Director Dressley?
You answered my question with the end of your statement. I was going to ask, is there going to be a levy committee? So you, you answered that. So thank you.
All right. Policy, we've been attempting to meet once a month, they accelerated it to twice a month. We were halted by terrible weather to virtually never now. We don't meet hardly ever. We got two, two meetings this month. I think two meetings a month is our likely schedule. Superintendent McDowell attends, and then administrative staff as needed, whether that's Director of HR, Director of Teaching and Learning, would attend to support discussion about specific policy topics. They're generally an hour to an hour and a half. And to accommodate the attendees' schedules, they've commonly been from about 4:00 to 5:30 on weeknights. Director Biesel, could you share a little bit about the frequency of community engagement? I'm not familiar with.
So it's been a while since we met. We had a project in place and we didn't have anything more to add, but we were meeting on Mondays or Tuesday nights, 6:00, 6:00 PM, once a month. And we haven't met since schools, we've been back in session. So we have to start talking about that again at this new year. But it was once a month on Tuesdays or, Tuesday or Monday night at 6:00.
And it's two board members?
It was two board members that were in total. We had made it at 6:00 PM. I can't remember, it was a Monday or Tuesday night.
Director Tate?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I was on the committee. We haven't met since May, and I'm questioning if we want to continue with that committee or not.
I made the comment, we needed to reevaluate if we're going to meet again after that project. So that's something maybe we discuss if it's needed, or we maybe start meeting up again with everybody.
Or determine what the goals are, I guess.
That, thank you. I appreciate that insight. Given our strategic anchor of, of communication and collaboration, I would be hesitant at this time to eliminate it going forward. But I do think that looking at to what degree it can be reengaged or needs to be reengaged and then making a decision in this next year would be valuable. Just, just my take on it, I'd hate to leave a, a committee so closely aligned to one of our strategic anchors out. Thank you. Superintendent McDowell has already spoken. I spoke to 917, we spoke to Minnesota State High School League, Metro EXU, the relicenser I'd like to express an opinion with regard to an executive committee. I have served as chair in the past. and did not find it necessary. Now admittedly, I did not serve in chair, as chair in such a tumultuous time as Director Davis did and through the level of, of change that he did. At that time, I found it sufficient to meet maybe once a month, maybe not even once a month with a superintendent to confirm agenda work and to look at the, the scope of the work or the timing of the work. And it was no more frequently than that. And that would again be my personal goal. I will, my past practice has been in the event that it's necessary to reply via email or a written document to a community member with regard to a series of questions is, in that case, I may ask the vice chair or Superintendent McDowell to provide some response to a drafted, to provide some editing to a drafted response and to, to check accuracy and tone. That would be on an as-needed basis, not on a regular meeting basis. I committed to, if a, a community member contacts the board, my reply would be to all board members. I would have a personal goal if I'm not in a family vacation properly, quite honestly. Knock on wood, I would never be in a family crisis. I would attempt to commit to a 48 to 72 hour response time, depending on where it falls over a weekend and the ability of an editor to give me additional insight. My response would include all board members. I do understand that some boards, school boards in the state of Minnesota use executive committee. I think that's a topic that, that we as a board could undertake a discussion of over this next year. But I, I would not anticipate doing something yet this year. Director Bysel?
I'm not very clear what an executive committee is. So if we can elaborate even what it entails or what it is.
My understanding, and again, I do know some boards that use it, is it's, would be the chair and the vice chair. So membership is already designated by election to the positions. And it's those two board members and the superintendent. I think different boards handle it differently, but I think it is not uncommon to meet weekly. I honestly don't know what they talk about. I've never asked that question, actually. I, I know people that serve in those roles and I've never asked what they actually do. Because my understanding is, and it's not even understanding, the work of the board is done at the board table. And establishing the flow of work could happen in an executive committee meeting. Do you have any additional insight to that, Superintendent McDowell?
Takes on a different flavor depending upon the district and what the needs of the district are. I think it's a, sometimes a catch-all title for a committee. The executive committee in some districts goes as far as, they're the, they're the ones who organize kind of the behind the scenes work of hiring a superintendent. Or they might also double as the finance review group. So that's, that's one spectrum. The other spectrum is simply that it's two people instead of one person that the superintendent works with in order to develop the work at the board table. And then there's everything in between. Committees are just that, they're, they're unique to each board and some districts have a lot of them and some districts have little to none.
Just to, to a point you had made earlier, Chair Hedin, the, the, the function that Dr. McDowell just described might have been, I would say somewhat comparable to what we did this past year in terms of how we did things. Granted, it was a different time. And I think that there was a lot that we're taking on and dealing with. So I would say that myself and Director Maum probably in some senses were working kind of like an executive committee, I suppose. It sounds kind of like that. So I think there's some merit to it, but the way you're characterizing wanting to move forward, I don't know that it's necessary. It all depends on people's work styles too. And so, but I, I can say that it's, it's, it's been done to some success, depending on how you want to look at it.
Director Zuzik?
Madam Chair, just comment that it makes sense to me to have an executive committee if part of the responsibility, or part of the goal is to grow leadership. And if that's not part of the goal, then I think whatever the board directors, the, the board chair's favor is, would make sense to me. I mean, if it works for the board chair to work closely with one person, it makes sense. But if we don't have some other underlying board level intention, I don't think it's necessary.
Is there any further discussion with regard to the committees and/or organizational appointments? Chair, or Director Davis?
Thank you. So I'm just kind of, one of the things that I think we'll need and might fall under the AMSDC component is I feel that especially in this particular year, based on the surplus at the Capitol and what's going on, someone that's at least paying attention and being involved in these meetings and reporting back in terms of what's going on from the legislative standpoint in St. Paul, might be something that'd be very useful this year, especially with the levy coming up. I don't think it's something we need every single time, but maybe just somebody that's, you know, spending time talking to our legislatures or legislators, excuse me, or, you know, communicating with them, finding out what their offices are up to, staying on top of what's going on up at the Capitol. Because with the surplus they've got right now and the way currently the branches sit up there, there's going to be significant movement in play in terms of what happens in terms of educational funding, for sure, this year. I mean, this is, this is, looks like a window and opportunity. So my question is, have we ever, or would we consider having someone that they're, you know, part of their role is to monitor and or report back on what's going on up there?
I'm not personally aware of having that formal position, but I have certainly advocated for having a, adopting a legislative platform. And I anticipate that's something that, that we will be discussing in our January regular board session, if not in the work session? Yeah, it's the work session tonight. We'll be talking about a legislative platform. And I would agree that a liaison, maybe that's too strong of a word, but a, a lead person on our legislative, should we adopt, be in a position to adopt a legislative platform, a, a lead coordinator would be valuable in that. And I do see it very closely aligning with our representative to see AMSD and then potentially Metro ESU, that that would be vested more likely than not in the same person.
Thank you.
Director Maum?
I just need to make a note too, that as your US chair are formulating the, the assignments, I cannot be on the legislative, like I can't, because I have, with my position with the Department of Military Affairs, I have to, unless it is written that it is nonpartisan, I can't be a part of it.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. Thank you. Director Tate?
I, I had asked before, but just wondering if folks think that we need to have the school board evaluation committee continue or not, or just ad hoc twice a year?
Thank you. I'm sorry I had forgotten. I do remember that you asked that question. I, and I wrote it down. I still forgot it. I would expect, my understanding of the, the charge to that committee when it was developed following our work session held at the Pleasant Hill Library was to identify a board evaluation process and that that process has been identified and implemented. So I think the work of that ad hoc committee is, was accomplished. We can talk about, we, we will be talking about the results more, but I don't see it as a, a committee going forward. Should we need to do more with it? I think we would reformulate it with people that have an interest and an availability at the, at that next time. But thank you for reminding me.
I, I guess I, I, I believe that we still need to have a finance committee. I think that yes, while the levy is going to be a huge portion of our responsibilities financially, I think that there, there are other things that the finance committee worked on this year that I think are still important. You know, budget check-ins and that kind of thing. I thought that it was very valuable work to be doing. And so I, I guess I, I believe that we should still have a finance committee.
Can you share with me some of the, a specific example of something that was accomplished? I mean, that, that the committee did that was separate from work that would have been done at, at the board table? Because we did receive budget updates. We did adopt, revise budget.
Yeah, I guess, I guess it was more of the deep dives that we were able to do in the finance committee to get additional information and, and just dig deeper into that further, for further understanding, to make sure that we as the committee were buttoned up on what, what should be going to the board and what we agreed to be going to the board. And I guess I, I assume that like elders, I mean, we made that decision as the finance committee. I assume that that's not going to be a decision that we would have to make again. But I just, I, I, I'm hesitant just with the amount of responsibility that we have with financial oversight, that eliminating that position, I don't like how that feels. I guess, and, and, you know, without having, and maybe we don't meet very often, but I just feel also there may come, something may come up not related to levy that we would want to say, you know what, we'd like the finance committee to dig into this a little bit more. And that would be, you know, that would be done by that group of people instead of having to be done by the entire board or create an ad hoc finance committee at the time or any of that.
Thank you. That's, that's totally fine. Well, another, another thing is to say, I am Director Maum and I would like the floor. So regarding finance committee, I'd, I don't know if you guys or the committee is more privy to information that the rest of the board isn't. I believe we have all the same information. But I can, I can appreciate, yeah, the deep dive and taking a look at the numbers and the, you know, the budget and, you know, is there anything that maybe needs to be brought to the board? I don't, I don't know. I've never sat on the committee, so I don't know if, if it's fruitful or not. I can see the efforts of the finance committee individuals moving towards levy work as we, as we ramp that up, not so much deep diving into, well, because we have all the, all of us have the same information regarding our finances. Also with policy 213, I believe it was last year or maybe the year before, I can't remember. We took out the, the naming of the standing committees. So if, say, you know, three months from now, we identify that we need this executive committee, that we need a finance committee, that we need to adjust the name or focus of the community engagement committee, we can always do that. That's one of the, the great things about being in our position is that we can actually make active change relatively quick within our, our, our parameters here. So I, I guess unless there's something that, like I haven't been made aware of over the last couple of years, I just wonder, maybe it just needs to be redefined and refocused.
I'm going to say that I'm really conscious of the length of time that we're taking on this item for discussion and that I would be interested in hearing a consideration for action soon. Director Tate?
I was just wondering if maybe we'd want to rename it the finance slash levy committee so that we have that established.
Yet again, I think the value of the levy, the importance of the levy requires work of the whole, board of the whole. Director Dresley?
So my understanding of the finance committee was in 2021 that it was created, and this is according to our own documentation on the agenda here, that it was created to enhance public confidence in the district's ability to effectively handle financial affairs throughout communications. So, I mean, I, I think it's of value to our community to keep that committee.
This is Director Zuzik. Thank you. And, and I just, I, unless the work of that committee is just overwhelmingly onerous, and particularly if the district administration sees it as a value, then I, I want to know that before we make our action.
Do you have any insight or would you care to ask Ms. Subert?
I can have her, offer her input. I can, from, from a district standpoint, it's, it's extra work on administration to put together for another committee that we already do for the whole board.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. At the same time though, I think for this last year at least, we used it kind of as an opportunity to go into a little bit more depth than what we did at a board meeting. So like an example would be the budget packet. Like when I did it with the finance committee, I did it, you know, page by page, very detailed. When it came to the, the board, you know, it was maybe just like the highlights. So if that's a value or not, that's up to the board, but that's kind of how I viewed it.
Thank you. I would like to point out that, that the board packet received all of, it contained all of the detail. So there was no additional, to, to some points, there was no additional information provided at finance committee that was not available to the, to the board as a whole. Hearing the discussion come to a conclusion, I'd be looking for an action item to move committees to action. We're looking for representatives to see AMSD, Metro ESU, policy, community engagement. We'll include 917 in the list, although that membership has been identified, Minnesota State High School League and relicensor.
Madam Chair, I wonder, Dr. McDowell, do we have to have somebody on self-funded insurance as a board member? We don't have to? Okay. Thank you.
I need somebody to, to move that to action.
I'm sorry, I'm just going to clarify. Have we determined what we're doing with finance yet?
I did not include finance on the list. We have not, we've not determined. We, we've been in a discussion. I think all points have been heard. So now I'm looking for an item to bring it to, to action. The action would be to approve these committees to Director Maum's point, nine, or policy 213 calls out that we would identify committees at this meeting. So that's why we need action. And it's not common practice for the chair to make the motion, so I'm waiting.
I would like to make a motion to add, just brace with me, policy committee, community engagement committee, 917, Minnesota State High School League, Metro ESU, as appointment only, relicensor committee, appointment, MSDA and AMSD, yes, thank you, and C as standing committees slash appointments. Second.
So just to clarify for process, the, the action right now is to move those standing committees into the action item portion of the agenda. And then we're going to just hit all our action items at the end of the, end of the agenda.
I, I guess I would like the board to vote on finance versus no finance. I, I guess I would like the board to vote on finance versus no finance versus just removing it at this point.
Okay, so we have a, we have a standing, we have a motion on the table.
Correct. So how do we vote? How do we as a board vote regarding finance first or?
You make an amendment to the motion, just like you'd try to make amendments to the agenda? You amend the motion, you get a second, and we act on that.
I think, I think I would like, I would like to add the finance committee as a separate action item to vote on separately, because it sounds like we're adding these as one long, right? Alter, to vote on altogether.
This is a single item. So let's, let's conclude the motion on the table.
But I just want to clarify, we can do that? Okay.
Yeah, so we're, we're include the, yeah, because we're in an item for discussion at this point. Director Dresley?
So legislative committee is off the table then as well? That wasn't?
So I didn't, I didn't, there was not a legislative committee identified? I think it would be, we would develop board voice around an adopted legislative platform. And then the, the person who likely would serve as C, AMSD and Metro ESQ, especially the first two, are working primarily on legislative issues and attending legislative pieces. They would, they individually would serve as an appointment or a kind of a coordinator or a conduit of communication.
Thank you for the clarification.
So we have a motion on the table for that list of committees the Director Malm had. We'll come back to Director Tate's motion, anticipated motion in a second, in a moment. Is there any further discussion on those committees?
If we could just get the list one more time, please make sure I'm clear.
Thank you. Appointments to C, AMSD, Metro ESQ, relicenser, and Minnesota State High School League and 917, and committees in policy and community engagement.
Thank you.
Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of the motion on the table to approve, bring those committees to improvement, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Director Tate, I anticipate a motion.
Yes, I move to add the finance committee as a separate item for separate voting.
I second that motion.
We have a motion in a second on the table to add an action item to approve a standing finance committee. Is there any discussion?
I just, I wait the input from administration that it's onerous and that it takes more time with little value to them.
Thank you, Director Zuzik. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of moving a, an action item to approve a finance committee? Is that an accurate representation of your motion? Thank you. Please signify by saying aye. We have a four, all those oppose, same sign.
Nay.
Did you get that? The motion carries. Thank you. So we will come to those in the future. Our next item for discussion is the 2023 board calendar. Superintendent McDowell will kick that off for us.
So I've given the board the update, it's in the packet. These are the, the dates that are proposed for the upcoming year as the regular board meetings and the regular work sessions. So we did try to do the feedback of what days might we change, and we ended up with a gigantic mess. Because what ended up happening is we were no better spot by adjusting dates than we were just keeping them to the Wednesday, the second and the fourth Wednesday. However, what you'll notice, if you scroll down to December, is that we've added the requested second meeting in December. And so every month right now has two meetings in it. The reason that Ju, or January 4 or 11 is in pink is because that typically is our organizational meeting. And what we did this year is we have a work session. So that would be the only thing that isn't spelled out here is if you would like to, as a board, add in advance that the organizational meeting will be on this calendar organizational slash work session on the same day. Otherwise, it's the same calendar that I shared with you earlier with those changes on it.
Is there any discussion? Director Dresley?
Can I ask a question? The 29th of March, is there a reason that it's, that we're not having a meeting on that day, that we're having it on the 22nd instead of March? Because that's the third, or no, that is the fourth.
It's the fourth. It's, yeah, I know.
Okay, so I have a comment.
February is, yeah, February is that same weird thing.
I will not be here for that meeting, but that's the only meeting in the whole, does that?
And that was one of the, March was one of the months that we looked at switching up. And it was a trade-off of, some people can make the 15th, some people can make the 22nd, and some people can make the 29th. So I didn't know what else to do. I mean, you're more than, again, we can always change regular meetings to special meetings along the way, if that makes sense. We just need to know in advance, but this, so that we can post.
Is there any further discussion? I would entertain a motion, I'm sorry, were you?
I was going to make a motion.
Okay, entertain a motion to move this to the adoption of the board calendar.
I'd like to make a motion to move the 2023 board calendar to an action item.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Director, or Chair Dean, am I understanding that the 4th of January would be, or that that date next year, we would plan to have it both be a work session and an org session?
So that's actually the date of last week.
Right, yeah.
I think it's been common practice to have the first, the org meeting night also be a work session night.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And not have three meetings in the month of January. Director Dresley?
Can we make a friendly amendment then to add that into the calendar then for the 3rd of January next year to be the board organizational? Is that?
Yes, please, if that's what you want.
Yep. That's what I thought.
I think that should be the intent. This doesn't actually cover January of 2024, does it? Okay, it's, I don't have it open in front of me. Oh, okay. All right, so friend, friendly amendment, is that like, oh, I see, that that will be an org meeting slash work session.
I would second the amendment.
Are you comfortable with the amendment? Director Malm? Okay. All right. Given the friendly amendment, we have a motion on the table to adopt the 2023 board calendar with, with that change to January 3rd. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Our next item is the listening session rotation.
Board retreats.
Is board retreats. Set a voice in my ear. Superintendent McDowell?
So the purpose of putting this on there was the request of the board at multiple meetings to figure out what, if any, you wanted to identify times during the year to do board retreat work. It's up to you whether, obviously, whether you want to do that or not, but this made the most sense to put it on as a discussion item first. This will be different than that calendar because its, retreats have been treated differently than the regular calendar schedule.
Director Malm?
Love to open up that discussion. So I thought our last retreat was, I found it beneficial, and I'd like to continue that practice at least two times this, this next year, so in the spring and then in the fall, as has been kind of our practice in the past to, to work on leadership, governance, board development, deep learning, work on any, like, robust work session items that are going to take more than three hours, which hopefully there aren't, but sometimes it happens. So yeah, the deep learning stuff, it'd be nice to at least get two dates on the calendar so that we can plan accordingly and not run into the issue that we ran into this last year where I think it was, gosh, almost a year before we got an actual retreat on.
Is there any further discussion?
I would just add that I don't know that it needs to go to necessarily an action item decide tonight. It would just be great to get direction from the board to say, put a doodle poll together during these two timeframes and we, we agree that that's what you wanted to, that's, that's really all I need to know.
Can administration put a doodle poll together? Looking at maybe, I'm just going to throw two months out there, please, everybody weigh in, April and then in September or October.
Does, do we need a second on that?
It's not an action item, it's a, it's an input, and Superintendent McDowell is going to listen to us. I think there's consensus around the room of doing two board retreats. Thank you. Given that general timeframe that was expressed by Director McDowell, Director Malm, and then accommodating schedules within administrative cycles, I don't know that September's a, might be a challenging year, time of the year, but, but if we can cycle on that, and I think we should look for some, we should anticipate some leadership from MSBA or somebody to help us make valuable use of that time, and we can decide topics through discussions at work session. Our next item for discussion is now the listening session rotation. Again, I don't think this is an action item. I think this is an information item. And listening sessions are going to continue until we, as a board, make a modification to policy 206, depending on what that looks like. So this...
What you'll notice here is that everybody is split as evenly as possible on this chart. And so some people have gotten back to me already that, hey, I can't make a day or a month work. And that was really the idea, was to get this out in front of everybody at this meeting so you could take a look at it and see if we, if we have to swap people, then you can swap, but at least you know well in advance of, of what's what.
Okay, so given that, let's anticipate that all directors will respond to the district office if there's a month that you can't make that you're currently scheduled, and then we'll keep this in a place. I'd love to hear where that is, because I constantly forget what we, what month I assigned up for or am assigned. Keep this in a place that we can check it prior to the meeting, maybe even if it just showed up in a board book note would be helpful. Director Tate?
I just have one question. This past year, we didn't have the chair included in the, in the listening sessions, and this year, we have all seven of us. Just want to ask why the change, or do we want to change it back? I don't know.
Didn't even think about that when, I had no reason, I just put everybody, I put all seven of you on it and rotated you through. Some people are on four times and some people are on three.
I would just comment that the chair has a lot of stuff to do, especially leading into a meeting. So sometimes that 15 minutes is valuable. So my, my suggestion would be that the chair continue to not be included in that rotation, but that's up to the chair.
I know, I'm trying to think of how I can, like, kindly accept that olive branch.
Accept it.
So I, I will say this, because I'm a bit of a, a early meeting attendee, I am commonly here 30 minutes before the meeting starts. Maybe we should, could remake this calendar without me in it and then anticipate that I'm probably already going to be here in the event that somebody is running late or has a conflict that I'm certainly open to being a sub. Let me use that approach. I don't want to make it look like I don't want to do the work, but I kind of, you know, want to take Brian's hand in this, that he's trying to give me.
Just very quickly before I forget, so March, I will be, Mar, I, don't put me on March, please. Don't put me on, because I have to remote in in March, I'll be in Virginia.
And don't put Director Dresley in March. I think just leave me in March, because I don't think I'm doing anything. All right, so Superintendent McDowell was just pointing out to me that further down in the agenda, we already had an action item to adopt the calendar. So we're only going to do that once, just saying. Nobody take it personal. We're only going to do that once. All right, and with that, we're going to move to our individual action items, the first of which will be the regular board meeting dates. I'm going to assume that this item includes the, the friendly amendment to the first meeting in January of 2024 to make that also an organizational meeting. Could I get a motion in a second to adopt those, that calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Director Davis, second by Director Zuzik in the discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same, oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Our next action item is to authorize the Director of Finance and Operations to perform the day-to-day duties of the clerk and treasurer. Could I get a motion in a second?
Out moved.
Second.
Sorry, we skipped one thing. And I guess I'm wondering if we have to do it. On there, there's a second recommended motion, motion to authorize the board to schedule meetings on Columbus Day as needed. That was within the agenda item, just wondering if we need to cover that.
Would somebody like to make a motion to authorize the board to schedule meetings on Columbus Day as needed?
So moved.
Motion by Director Tate, second by Director Bysel, is there any discussion?
What date is that?
The 11th of November or something. No, sorry, that's Veterans Day. It's a Mon, I think it's a standing day as a Monday, so it would be improbable.
For ninth.
It'd be improbable that we would use it, but just in case. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Next, we have a resolution to combine the day-to-day duties of the school board clerk and treasurer. Director Bysel, do you have that motion, or do you have that resolution? Okay.
Person to, to do call and notice therefore of a regular meeting of the school board of independent school district 200, Hastings Public Schools, state of Minnesota, was held in and said, school district of January 11th, 2023 at 5:00 PM. Whereas Minnesota statutes 123 dot 4, 14, subsection 1 empowers the school board to combine the duties of the offices of clerk and treasurer to the, of the school board in one person of the office of business affairs of the school district. Whereas the school district has decided to combine the duties of the clerk and treasurer in one person of the office of business affairs. Therefore, be it resolved that the Director of Finance and Operations of the school district is designated by the school board of independent school district number 200 to perform the day-to-day duties of the clerk and treasurer of the district. Can I get a second?
Second, Zuzik.
Is there any discussion? Director Tate?
Yeah, I guess I'm confused because it says that the duties are going to go to one person, but in actuality, they're going to two.
So under statute, you can only declare that it goes to the office of business affairs, and it has to be both, it doesn't give you an opportunity to do one or the other. However, those duties can be delegated inside of administration, which is what we end up doing. And remember that you're, that the executive assistant, so currently Krista, and in the permit position Becky, is the executive assistant for the school board as well, not just the superintendent.
Thank you for clarification. Thank you for clarification.
Is there any further discussion? Director Bysel, could you take a roll call vote?
Brian Davis?
Yes.
Mark Zuzik?
Yes.
Becky Bysel, yes. Stephanie Malm?
Yes.
Jessica Dresley?
Yes.
Carrie Tate?
Yes.
Lisa Hadine?
Yes.
Whereupon the resolution was declared adopted.
That's okay.
New Year.
No, no, no. You had to do that. I see drive this morning. You get, you get so many waivers, the whole thing. No, you totally, you totally get a pass tonight. All right, our next, I did. I tried not to let it hurt my feelings. Next action item is to establish the 2023 board member compensation. As you may recall, the last two years, this Hastings School District has chosen to, or the Hastings School Board has chosen to set our compensation at $0.00. The table has been included out to 2020, and Superintendent McDowell, upon receiving a cumulative list of board compensations in Dakota County, did send that out to the board in advance, just so you could kinda see context. We are the only board within Dakota County that is choosing to take no compensation. So at this time, I would take, consider a motion to approve a 2023 board member stipend, and that motion could include a stipend for the chair or not.
Chair Hadeen?
I'd make a motion that we go to the compensation that was present for the 2020 school year and move that to 2023 with no addition. That would be $4,250 for board members, $2,750 for the board chair.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Are you thinking about it, Director Dresley?
I am.
You look like you're ready to say.
So out of our seven district comparable districts, the average between the seven of them would be $5,000, so I guess I'm completely fine with it going back to what it was in 2020.
Director Zuzik?
Chair Hadine, I just wanna comment that when I looked at those schools, I know them all very well. I know how big they are. I know how large they all are. And relative to the work, based on the size of the district, the dollar amounts that are being proposed this evening are, I think, in keeping with the relative size and responsibility that we would have.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Motion on the table is to advance board member compensation equivalent to what it was in 2020 of $4,750 for board chair and $4,250 for board members for the 2023 calendar year. We received a second, and I've already forgotten who it was. Director Malm. With motion from Director Zuzik, second from Director Malm.
Yes.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Note that the vote was six to one. Director Bysel is in opposition for notes. Thank you. Not in like real life. She's not an oppositional person. All right, thank you. Our next action item is to identify official district depositories. The banks identified are included in the description of the board book item and are now available on the screens in the room. At this time, I would entertain a motion to designate the official direct district depositories as indicated in these tables.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Director Bysel, second by Director Malm. Is there any discussion? Director Tate?
I apologize. I forgot to ask. Are these all the same banks that we used this year? I was gonna look it up and ask, and I forgot. It is. And no problems with any of them. So, all right, thank you.
The answer to Director Tate's question was yes, those are all the same, and there have been no problems. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion on the table to designate the official district depositories as indicated, please say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Our next action item is to, I would entertain a motion to delegate the Superintendent, Director of Finance and Operations, Finance Supervisor, and Payroll Benefit Supervisor to make electronic funds transfers.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Director Malm, second by Director Bysel. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
I used to think it was Italian.
Okay. We gotta keep moving. It's starting to fray. The edges are starting to fray. All right, our next action item is a motion to, I would entertain a motion to delegate the authority to the Superintendent and Director of Finance and Operations to sign contracts and enter into agreements.
So moved.
Second, Zuzik.
Motion Director Bysel, second Director Zuzik. Is there any discussion? Director Tate?
I just had one question on this, and it was, what is the current authority that the Superintendent of Director of Finance and Operations have? What amount can they sign contracts on that the board doesn't agree or vote on?
Superintendent McDowell?
Currently, the Minnesota statute governs the limits on that with bid law, which I believe is at $175,000 currently. So that would be the ceiling of what something could happen. As the board's aware, multiple times, we bring things to the board that are well below that, when it makes sense for the board to know that there's a big purchase coming down the pipe.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion on the table to delegate authority to the Superintendent and Director of Finance and Operations to sign contracts and enter into agreements, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. The next action item upon which I would entertain a motion is to authorize the delegation of authority to the Superintendent and Director of Finance to enter into joint powers purchasing agreements.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Director Malm, second by Director Bysel. Is there any discussion? Director Dresley first, please.
So can you just explain to me what the joint powers purchasing agreement, is that for the food services and things like that, or can I get some clarification just for?
I'll let Ms. Subert explain all the different types of joint powers agreements we have.
Yeah, so there's many that we use, and some of them can be as simple as like office supplies. If another, like bigger district has already gone out to bid, then we're able to just to get that pricing by entering into a joint powers agreement. But the food service is another one. There's, there's a whole bunch of them.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion on the table to authorize the delegation of authority to the Superintendent and the Director of Finance and Operations to enter into joint powers purchasing agreements, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Our next item, and I would entertain a motion, is to approve the designation of identified officials with authority to the MDE External User Access Recertification System as follows: Dr. Robert McDowell to act as the identified official with authority, and Ms. Williams to act as the identified official with authority to add and remove names only for Hastings Public School District 0200-01. Does anybody?
Chair Hadine, I'll make that motion with a side comment that this is not a job that anybody wants. It's a fair amount of work, and you're getting dinged all the time for it. Somebody needs this authorization and that authorization. So thank you, Dr. McDowell, for doing this.
He's sitting there hoping right now it dies for lack of a second. Is anybody ready to second?
Second.
All right, I'm gonna give that to Director Dresley. Just, just cause, yeah. But knowing the context now, I do have some concern that there might be retribution to those two board members, so let's all keep our eyes out, right? Make sure everybody's treated fairly going forward. I'm not gonna read, read the entire motion, but I'm, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion on the table as written, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. The next item on the table is, or I would consider a motion to designate the Hastings Journal as the official district publication.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion by Director Malm, second by Director Dresley. Is there any discussion? Director Malm?
Just, and I apologize for not sending an email earlier, but I would assume the journal still is cheaper than the Pioneer Press at this time, by word. Yeah, I mean, we haven't checked it recently, but it was much cheaper initially, yes. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Motion on table to designate the Hastings Journal as the official district publication. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Our next action item, and I would consider a motion, accepting a motion to approve the following law offices to act as legal counsel for the Hastings School District, Rupp, Anderson, Squires, Waldberger, and Mace, PA, Ratwick, Rozak, and Maloney, PA, Knutson, Flynn, and Dean's, PA. Could I get a motion in a second?
Zuzik, motion.
Second.
Motion Director Zuzik, second Director Malm. Is there any discussion? Director Tate?
Yes, I'd like to note that in the past, I have made two motions to discuss my concerns related to the quality of work provided by the Rupp firm. The two motions failed without any explanation regarding those who voted against those motions. As a reminder, my concerns relate to being provided with documents that included inaccurate information, formatting issues, grammatical issues, but also the fact that they aided in time, place, and manner restrictions which were placed on an elected official that didn't allow him the ability to perform his duties as an elected official. This alone could have led to the district being sued. In addition, the board was also provided legal advice which referenced inaccurate information regarding the current status of a lawsuit. It is my opinion that it is the board's responsibility to ensure that we have the highest quality lawyers working for the district. It is also my opinion that not having this conversation and ignoring these concerns is nonfeasance. As a reminder, committing nonfeasance and malfeasance can lead to elected officials being removed from office. Since we are billed over $200 per hour for this firm's work, which I believe, which obviously I have stated my concerns, I would like to understand, and I believe the taxpayers need to, should be able to understand, why we have not had a conversation regarding these concerns to date.
I'm gonna ask if there's any further discussion on the motion on the table. Director Malm?
Thank you for your opinion. It has been my experience that they have been nothing but professional in representing our district.
Is there any further discussion with regard to the motion on the table? Hearing none. And with a motion as second, let's call a vote for all those in favor of the motion on the table as written with the three law firms. All those in favor say aye. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Vote was five-two with Directors Tate and Dresley in opposition. Again, just with regard to the vote. Thank you. I would entertain a motion as second to approve the following auditors for the Hastings Public School District, Maloney, Montague, Karnowski, Radosevich, and Company.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. Motion Director Bysel, second Director Malm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve the auditors for the Hastings Public School District, Maloney, Montague, Karnowski, Radosevich, and Company, PA, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next, we have the committee action item that was moved down from our items for discussion with the extended list of committees. I would entertain a motion in a second to approve those committees as listed in the action item.
So moved. Second.
I'm gonna switch sides occasionally so that, because I sort of felt you moving, but I didn't actually see you. Like, I was like already looking this way. So the motion, motion was made by Director Bysel, second by Director Zuzik, even though he tried to give it away. Is there any discussion? Director Tate?
So I guess last year, we, I believe we each just submitted an email to the chair expressing our interests. Is that the expectation for this year as well?
So I said no, but then now we're at 7:00, and we haven't even gotten to the work session. So yes, submit it to me in writing, and I'll send something out. We'll try and send something out by the end of the week, or sometime. Well, no, I won't, because I'm at MSBA early next week. Further discussion? Director Malm?
I can talk to you offline too, but we have policy committee next week too, so I just wanna, if we're gonna have, should I just proceed as?
Yes, proceed as if you will be on policy. I would anticipate very little change. I don't think we're gonna do anything particularly radical assignments unless people have come to a point where they can't serve in those roles. And if you wanna just grab me after the meeting, we can walk out and I can pencil stuff down, and we can do it really quickly. I don't, I don't wanna make this a bigger thing than it is. I'm sorry, I lost track. We voted on this motion. This is so easy, sitting across the table. I know. So the question is, Director Davis, did we vote on this motion already? Okay. Thank you. Somebody's paid attention. Is there any further discussion on the committees?
We have not yet.
Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the approved committees as listed in the action item, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Did we skip an action item here for the signatures?
Oh, we did.
Oh, I thought you were getting ready to approve or move or second something. No, like seriously, be like, Chair Hadine, that's not, that's not the topic. Thank you very much. So we're gonna move back to a skipped action item, and that is a motion, I would accept a motion to approve the use of facsimile signatures from the board chair, the board treasurer, and the board clerk on school district checks. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second. Happy not to be one of them.
Thank you. Motion Director Dresley, second Director Zuzik. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion on the table to approve the use of facsimile signatures, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, Director Dresley, for catching that. The next action item is a motion, I would entertain a motion to continue the finance committee into the 2023 calendar year.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion Director Tate, second Director Dresley. Is there any discussion? Director Tate.
I think on top of what I've already said previously, the, the other reason that I think I, I found great value in the Finance Committee was having the, been a new board member and not having been a veteran like Director Hadeen, Chair Hadeen, and, and being able to get, have the opportunity to get that deep dive and get that more one-on-one conversation opportunity to understand school finances was tremendously beneficial to me.
Director Malm?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm conflicted about this one too, because I can see how it could benefit if, if, you know, we have board members that sit on that committee and then you identify some type of concern that, hey, you know, the board needs to, to, to be aware of this. But I feel like, too, again, having never sat on the committee, that I have received all the information that I need to make the, the financial decisions as a board member. I don't wanna add more work to administration. I, I'm not, I don't, okay, how do I word this? I, I don't know if we need the committee right now, but I also want to pay close attention to finance, as we always do, but should we identify a need to bring it back or, like, redefining to, like, if we identify that with, and we talk, we talk about levy, right, a lot, that there needs to be further discussion about what that actually looks like from a financial aspect, that we would bring it back? I guess that's, that's kind of my caveat to, is that, yeah.
Director Beisel.
I was just gonna say the same thing. I don't think we need it at this time. We're on top of finances, we get it before the board meetings. I do think that it's something to reevaluate, especially if we think that there's red flags in front of us that we're not seeing, and then also talking with the Levy Committee that I think that can be combined, especially too, if we actually are talking with the Levy Committee and that, you know, that goes obviously with the finances. So, I think that's something that we can look at in the future.
Is there any further discussion? I would like to add that I, I do believe the Finance Committee has been valuable. At times, it feels like currently the work in front of the board is, is not that work, and we don't have novice board members anymore. The work is the levy, and that's work of the whole. And to the point that Policy 213 does not identify standing committees, it allows us to discuss them and we can certainly adopt them as needed. So, I could see it being an action in the future, much like board evaluation, self-evaluation. All right, hearing no further discussion. The motion on the table is to keep the Finance Committee into the 2023 calendar year. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. Aye. Motion fails four to three. Chair Hadeen, Director Malm, Director Beisel, and Director Zuzik were in opposition to that. We're not gonna address the board calendar again, because I think we've already done that. Am I losing track? Thank you. I think there was an approval of the item, the item to add a discussion regard, or an action item, pausing the use of future topics, request for future topics for four months. I don't see that at this point, but, but that was a, that was a motion for, was it for action or for discussion? I think it was for action.
So, what I, I have, I took a lot of notes at the beginning there, so it was a, an amendment to the agenda requesting for future topics to be removed from the agenda. So, that was the first one. And then there was a subsequent amendment to the agenda to suspend future topics from the agenda for four months.
All right, so while it's not standing practice, I, as the person who added, asked to have that item added, I am gonna make a motion to suspend the request for future topics for four months. See if there's a second prior to discussion.
Second.
Thank you. I would like to make a point, and this was discussed a little bit during the consideration of making this an, an agenda item, is we always have the ability as a board to readjust. And I, I picked the four months. I think I was initially thinking three. I picked the four months to give us time to see if we could work together well enough as a board that items would be brought forward for consideration using our current practice as identified in our, in our 200 policies of identifying it to the Superintendent and the Chair, and then it would be just either responded to or scheduled into one, a committee meeting, a work session, or a board agenda. I wanted to give us sufficient time to see if we had the discipline and the experience now to do that. If it proves that even after two months, that that's not possible, that we aren't at that place and we don't work in that way, we can make this exact same, take a similar action and reestablish it. So, I'm just, I'm setting it as an optimistic goal, giving us time enough to, to, to try it and to build some muscle memory and organizational practice around our previously established practice. Is there further discussion? Director Malm?
With removing the future topics from the agenda from business meetings for four months, I guess my, my focus would be to, let's get caught up on our current work that we have that's, well, current work, actually, it's outstanding work. We have a lot that we need to work on, and Superintendent McDowell did send us a, a calendar that outlines all of those items that have been brought up over the last few months. I also wanna make sure that this does not completely, like, I, for the next four months, any board member can't just, or that we, that we do have the ability to contact the Chair and say, hey, you know, this issue came up, is this something that we can bring on as an agenda item? I, if it's serious enough, it probably is already identified, but I just don't want this to be four months of a hard no. I guess that's my, my biggest concern about this, this particular motion to remove the, the future topics from the agenda. So, I guess I, I don't know how you would get, how you would address that.
Well, I would address it, I can only address it by expressing my intent. That's all that I can do. And, and, and if I prove to not be capable of living up to my intent, I would expect the board to take some action and reestablish it. It is not my intent to say we are not gonna consider any board member topics. That is not what this is saying. This is saying the practice of including requests for future topics at the board table in a board set, business meeting session, does not comply with our current policies, and it's put us in a place where we've had maybe some unclear motions taken and unclear actions taken, and we've gotten to a place with a substantial amount of outstanding work, as you pointed out. The intent would be to use a practice that, again, that I've seen in my veteran years, I took it as well as I could. As a board member, where an item is identified either through noted public engagement in emails or conversations, or a board member raises it as a question or an observation that that's brought to the Chair and the Superintendent and then engaged in, in a proactive way. And it may well be that the, the topic is, well, that's a management question, let's get an administrative report on that topic scheduled in the next two months so that we can do some board deep learning about it. Not, not that it becomes an item, it becomes an administrative informational board deep learning response, or it becomes, that's work for the Community Engagement Committee, let's make sure that that gets shared with them, then brought forward. So, the intent, all I can speak to is my intent, which would be to, to hear those pieces coming in and respond to them, allocating them to a, an appropriate board workplace, or responding to them with, that's not a governance question, but an opportunity for board deep learning. Director Beisel.
I just wanna comment that I agree, I think we can always revisit. I think it holds us to work together as a board and holds us, each and every one of us accountable and to be a team. So, I, I am complete agreement with this, but also can revisit it in two months if we feel like it's not working for any of us, but I feel like it's gonna hold us accountable and to really work together as a team.
I'm gonna say Director Dresley first, although I'm not sure whose hand I saw move first.
So, my question is, is, as a board member, we still have the ability to add something to an agenda by making a motion during a meeting, obviously, that's still correct, because that's what's in our policy, correct?
Yeah, adding an item to the agenda and, and the adoption of the agenda portion is always available to us within the context of the policy and rules of Robert, Robert's Rules of Order. Director Tate.
So, I have, I have several concerns with this. I expressed some of them already, but one, I understand that it is the responsibility of the Chair and the Superintendent to set the agenda. However, by putting this decision solely on the Chair, that is giving the Chair quite a bit of power. And we are all, all seven of us are supposed to have equal power. And so, that's why I liked what we were doing, is that, one, again, all of the board members were then aware of what a concern a board member had, and so that that's out there. And also, so, you know, part of the, the handbook is also that we're not supposed to have any surprises at the board table. So, my habit at least is emailing all of my questions and intents to the Chair and the Superintendent ahead of this meeting, including, I plan to make a motion for this for a future topic. Now, at that point, that would be when I would expect the Chair Superintendent to come back and say something like, no, that's management. Right? So, that's when I would see that getting nixed as, no, you know, I don't recommend making this motion, because, you know, it shouldn't be a, a board issue. The other thing that this, this, to me, feels like it's going directly against transparency, because, again, this information is going to one or two people and is not shared with the entire board as a team. And then I'm going to make a comment. We, we have this tentative schedule for, for February, and it includes two items that I have requested for discussion. One of them is the signage and messaging. The first time that I brought that up to the former Chair and Superintendent was last February. So, we are discussing it one full year later. And I'm, I'm, I'm gonna say it's only because I have publicly asked for that more than once. So, I'm sorry, but it, I, I don't like putting this all on one person and having it basically off the record. And the other thing is by, it, for example, if I have a topic that I'm seeing that needs to be discussed, but the Chair disagrees, it's not gonna happen, right? So, then my only option to bring it to the board is to bring it as a surprise to the vast majority of board members as a, a motion to amend tonight's agenda, and that's bringing surprises to the board. So, the intent of adding it at the end for a future top, we didn't, we didn't establish a timeline on when these things had to be discussed, but it was at some point, I would like to discuss this, we vote on it as a board, and it gets put on an agenda. We, by, by taking, by removing this process for four months is not reducing our workload necessarily, it's just pushing it down the road, because there may be, I mean, or handling it differently, or if I feel, you know, if I bring two topics over the next four months and I'm told, no, we're not gonna discuss this, then I'm just bringing those topics four months from now. So, to me, it's just pushing it further down the road. So, like I said, I have, I have a lot of concerns with this. It, it makes me very much feel like the board doesn't wanna hear what board members want to discuss. And that's ultimately how I was feeling at the beginning of last year and why I really, I, I asked for a new process, because it wasn't, it wasn't working, I, it wasn't working for me as a board member.
Sorry, is there any further discussion? Director Dresley.
I can agree with what Director Tate said, it was a process that wasn't working. As new board members, it wasn't, it, we weren't able to get stuff across, and the majority of the board didn't even know that we were asking the questions. So, I think this process was, was very helpful in having these topics for future discussion. They weren't surprises at the board table to where they were brought up as a motion, and then we all have to discuss it with no information in front of us, because it's addition to the agenda, and instead of it being pushed out to a work session, because we've decided and voted on it as a group that we were gonna talk about this topic. That's my.
Director Malm?
We, we added the request for future topics because we needed to formalize the way that agenda items were being addressed to the Chair, to the board, to the Superintendent. It was not working. Now that we are developing, hopefully you feel the same, a little bit more trust with each other, that we can go back to that more informal process, and you will see your requests going on, now that you, you, you have a year under you, you know what governance is, you know what, what, what management is, we can kind of vet through all of that. I, I personally, I'm a big fan of formalized processes, and I, I found this very helpful. It has, I'll say it, it has become too much. It becomes, I, I feel surprised. Every single time you bring something to the table with future topics, we end up having these long discussions about these topics. And it has, I mean, it's just a motion to add it as a, as an agenda item. So, I, I don't know if it's been useful, and so at this point, I'm kind of thinking, well, maybe we revert back, maybe we need to find a different process for, for future topics to, to add them to agendas. I don't know what that looks like, but I think that the more that we work together, the more that we, you know, retreats will be fantastic. I, I really, really hope so that we can continue moving forward and doing good work for the district. I, I want to revisit this at the three-month mark, four-month mark, and max four months, to see if this needs to go back, if the future topics need to go back on. I, I recognize your concern, and I, I, I do understand where you're coming from, Director Tate. I would, I am curious to see if this does work, if we do pull it off. And it, and if not, then you let the Chair know, and you let the rest of the board know and say, okay, because at four months in April, we'll be revisiting this. So, that's my, my standpoint on that.
I think this has identified a potential topic. I don't know if it's a minor or major topic, we'll see how things are going for the spring retreat. That says, is this, is this process of engaging, is whatever process we're using at that time for engaging board members actively at committees, work sessions, and board meetings functioning, and how does it need to be amended? Is there further discussion on the motion at the, on the table? Hearing none. The current motion is to suspend the request for future topics for four months, which takes it off of business agendas from January through April. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four to three. Directors Davis, Dresley, and Tate were in opposition. I gotta come up with a better way. I'll work on that. All right. This time, I would consider a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Director Malm, second by Director Dresley to adjourn the meeting, the organizational meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion is, uh, meeting is adjourned. It looks to me like